Before we get started tonight, we are fortunate to have Pastor Richard Norris of the Trinity Lutheran Church here. He's going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. I'd ask everyone to make sure their phone is turned off and vibrate. If you have a hat, please remove your hats. I encourage you to stand for the invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, dear God, as we gather on this day of remembrance, the anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attacks against our great nation, please renew each one of us with a hope and a determination to never forget those who perished that day, even if we didn't know them, that they were loved by others and they left their imprint upon the entire nation. We also remember the survivors and the struggles that they are facing, even some 22 years later. We ask your blessing upon them. Continue to strengthen each one of us with a determination to bring peace and harmony in our nation and in our community of Lake Placid. Fill our hearts with the sure and certain knowledge that you are our sturdy foundation upon whom we build and live our lives. Our hope is found in you alone. As these men and women gather here this evening to carry out and discuss the business of the town of Lake Placid, grant them wisdom and good sense to all who are involved, our town leaders and our residents. Bless this, our hometown, and all who lead, live, and do business here in the town of Lake Placid. We pray all this and whatever else is on our hearts and minds this evening in your precious name. Amen. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for allowing me to come and do the invocation.
Thank you very much, Reverend Norris. We certainly appreciate it. Okay. Unfortunately, Mayor Holbrook can't be with us tonight, so as Vice Mayor, I will chair the meeting. We'll start with a roll call. Eva?
Mayor Holbrook, Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Saat?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay. First item of business is the consent agenda.
We've to approve Consent Agenda 1.
Second.
Got a motion of second. Any further discussion? Anyone from the audience in regards to consent agenda? See none. Eva, will we pull the board, please? The council, please?
Councilmember Saat?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay. There is nothing on Consent Agenda 2 this month. We are now to presentations, requests to speak citizens on the agenda. So let me tell you what we're going to do tonight, folks. We have had a request to have some presentations. We're going to go ahead and allow it, but we're going to do this under some order in the sense that each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Mr. McCarthy is going to keep track of the time. He'll even give you a warning when you're about out of time. We'll ask you to wrap it up. I've talked to some of the citizens that have a presentation that's going to go a little longer than three minutes, so they're going to combine some of their time and we're going to utilize that. Spoke to Ms. Charles, Ms. Parker about that. If you want to make a comment, please fill out a form and you can give it to Eva. She'll pass it forward. The forms on the back somewhere. There's forms on the back.
On the table out there.
If you're going to speak, we're going to ask you to come to the podium. We're going to ask you to identify yourself and your address for the record. We need to have that for the record. We are not going to allow any, anything kind of yelled out or from the back. We're going to ask everyone to please use proper decorum. You know, no jeering, no cheering from the back puce, so to speak. And we'll continue to let everyone who speaks, who's filled out a form and wants to, as long as everyone does it in orderly fashion. Okay. So what do we have? What forms do we have, Kevin? Okay. Okay. Are we dialed up on Ms. Parker's presentation? Ms. Parker?
Good evening. I'm Marlene Parker, 760 Sunset Point Drive. This is a dual presentation with Colleen Charles, 522 Sunset Point Drive. Eva, would you set it to? Yeah, perfect. Next? The thing we want to talk about is, we want to go back to the meeting for 21 August when we talked about requests that came that we wanted the town to do. One of the things we asked at that time was to pause the current connection plan for low-pressure system. That's what we asked for. But under that, we also talked about redesign for gravity by area. We wanted to meet, wanted you to meet the people in the impacted areas for feedback. We also wanted to prioritize based upon the current grant money available. And we wanted to set a date tonight for another special meeting for sewer coordinated with our leader, to Save Our Lakes. And we thought, the last time I mentioned about the EPA guidance, and we want the town to perhaps have a town, a workshop, or to mail out those that's listed up there, because that would be very helpful for people who have septic systems. We also talked last time and asked the mayor to authorize a group to routinely work with members of the town and coordinate around. And we simply want that to be an informal meeting. Many of you have seen that before. Next. We need connection for both low-pressure and gravity systems. And what we want to do is to analyze the routine maintenance costs for both systems. You want to look at the repair, replacement, vehicles, employees, and service contractors. You also want to look at the, analyze the lifetime cycle, the legacy that comes with hiring additional personnel that we believe one system will require over the other. And in case of limited funds, we also want to be able to look at modern septic systems as an alternative. Next. At the meeting on 21 August, this is what we were shown. This is a lift station in the middle of the block in a torn-up entity with comments that were made, may not have access to property or have, be able to walk to your homes. Next. Come on, Eva, run. Okay. This is more a realistic picture of a lift station, and you could nicely put shrubs around that, the torn-up road to say people can't get to. You can't prevent people from getting to their homes. And you can see in this picture here, they tore up the road. It's close to homes. You can still pick up trash and you still have a way to pass. Some of the roads might be more narrow than that, but nonetheless, they will make an effort so traffic can continue. Next. What are we trying to accomplish? What all of us are trying to accomplish with the proposed Lake Placid sewer system? Next. One thing, and overall, we wanted to improve the quality of our lakes. Next. What becomes important, and we talked about earlier, was who's leading the water quality effort? Because we think it's a coordinated effort among the Florida Department, DEP, Southwest Florida Water Management District, Fish and Wildlife Commission, South Florida Water Management District, and Highlands County. And we want to leverage resources, expertise, and budget dollars. We also want to set priorities to mitigate the priority, to mitigate the flow from Catfish Creek into Lake June. And the best business practices should be implemented from the study recommendation. And this be accomplished with a sewer-designed system. Next. So I'll go on from here. There's a SWIFTMUD 2020 study, and it's out on the Save Our Lakes website. And we're going to pull out a few charts that we think are important to continue to reference. And one is, is a page on water quality overview. Some key points is Lake June is phosphorus-limited. Removal should be the most effective in limiting algae blooms, which we hear a lot about, especially with beach closures. And fertilizer contribution needs to be addressed. And this table here shows the percent of, while septic may have the higher nitrogen count, the fertilizer is the higher phosphorus contribution. Next chart. This table, too, is important because it talks about these best management practices for Lake June that break it between structural and the location. So Catfish Creek, the golf course, the scrub park, regarding the different things that should be put in place and should be considered. Next chart. What's very interesting on this chart is the very bottom ranks. So the top metrics are the six alternatives that they're recommending, with the number one rank is fertilizer ordinance, and then the cost estimate associated with them, which would be zero, as you walk your way over to constructed wetlands, floating wetlands, testing the septic tanks and the repairs, which is the largest amount on this recommendation of a million dollars onto the scrub park and the sampling, what could be done there. Next. Additional information that I think is important is that DEP has a list of impaired water reports. And for Lake Placid, it's, Lake Placid areas is Lake Placid, Lake Henry, Lake Blue, Lake Buck, Grassy Lake, and the Lake Placid outlet. Interesting to note, Lake June in winter is not on the DEP's impaired list. SWIFTMUD has 2022 and '23 fiscal year projects for $260,000 for BNP improvement of water quality, constructing stormwater BMPs in Catfish Creek. So interesting to note, something from the BMPs that SWIFTMUD is doing that hasn't been very well communicated. Next chart. Oh, let's not forget the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission responsibility. And the request that came up last meeting was return aquatic plants to Lake June. This is, the top part is a 2016 email that Marlene wrote to FWC saying, "I noticed the maiden cane is disappearing from Lake June. I know carp were added to the lake to eat the Illinois pond weed, and I'm also told that they don't like the maiden grass. Can you confirm? If not attributed to the carp, do you have any insight on why the maiden grass is disappearing?" This is 2016. The response was, "Marlene, it is the carp eating the maiden cane. Neither the maiden cane nor the pond weed is the carp's favorite food, but there is much more pond weed than maiden cane, and pond weed grows back a little faster. The result is the maiden cane is disappearing everywhere the carp can reach it. Unfortunately, this was a risk when stocking the carp. We stocked a low number, and they can leave the lake. There's no barrier. I think that they should all be gone by now." That was 2016. I think most people who live on the lake do not see, you know, the maiden cane returned. Next chart. So the next steps that we would like to discuss with the town council is, as been requested many times, schedule a special town hall meeting within the next 30 days, which should be interactive with roaming hand microphones for citizens' questions. Have the community room as an overflow, as evidence was from the interest. The last time, a lot of people couldn't attend. They couldn't stand up that long, and so they had to leave. We think it's also important to invite representatives from these various jurisdictions that are all working on different parts of water quality, such as the Highland County Commissioners, SWIFTMUD, the Florida DEP, and the Fish and Wildlife Commission. And also, as was requested, to authorize a citizen sewer septic water quality committee. I'll turn it back to the Vice Mayor for his comments.
Thank you, ladies. We appreciate, certainly appreciate your input. I, again, the mayor, this is really, these decisions as to your requests are up to the mayor, and the mayor is not here tonight. I'm the chair. I would, but I can tell you that I believe that, not tonight, but that we will, in the very near future, schedule a workshop specific to this topic, and it will also give staff several weeks to address, to the degree possible, the informational requests that you've made. I know that we, I know obviously that there was six or seven people that went to Highlands County, Board of County Commissioners, you know, was it, it was last Thursday. I know Ms. Charles was there, spoke with them. And I know that what the Highlands County Commission basically said was, "We said we were going to be supportive of Lake Placid in this project, and that's ultimately where they're going to go." They will certainly, they also said they need to make sure that they are aware of, as these items come on our agenda, we will make sure they're very aware of the workshops and any meetings where we're going to make any decisions. I think certainly leadership in your group understands, at least if not everyone in the audience, that tonight, we are not going to make any decisions in regards to
Understand.
what system's going to be. Well, we're going to consider and likely adopt a resolution that would allow us to gain more funds, to assist in this process. Do you have a question, Ms. Parker?
Understand that. When you say workshop, what does that mean? Does that mean a special meeting like we had previously?
My perception, and again, it's for the mayor to call that type of meeting, but I perceive that we will have a workshop probably sometime in the next
When you say words, there's workshop, and then there's a special meeting, like we had a town council special meeting. So we'll leave that for later.
Right.
So that's where the question is.
I'm going to use the word workshop because in that, we will speak very topic-specific.
That's fine. I think we need to do all of the above.
Right.
I think we need to do both.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. So I think that, I think that is there. I think that I will ask, and certainly that our staff consider, I think on your first slide, you asked for three, you all collectively asked for three or four things. We will ask staff to consider what they want to do in that regard, and we will come back. But we are committed to being very open through this process. Again, I understand that it's frustrating to hear people say, "We don't know the answer to that." I think it's equally frustrating to those of us up here in the decision capacity to understand that we do not have all the answers we need, all the information we need yet to be able to make the decisions we need to make. But we certainly understand. Is that good, Ms. Parker? Okay. Okay. Our next, I think our next presenter has some pictures. Mr. Hartzell. We got him dialed up his pictures in the system. You'll give us your name and your address, Mr. Hartzell.
My name is Fred Hartzell. My address is 250 Lake Pearl Drive, and I'm here to present some items of interest in regards to the contamination that, this particular picture here is the, where Catfish Creek actually leaves the lake of Lake Placid headed towards Lake June. So that is right there, if anybody knows the area where the boat ramp is on the north end, or I'm sorry, yeah, on the north end of the lake, Lake Placid, where there's a concrete bridge there. And this is the tributary coming from the lake headed towards Lake June, which is Catfish Creek. There's other pictures in here. That's another picture of that very area. That's on the north side of Lake, Lake View, Placid View. That is, that is the sign of the waters that we talk about, the blue algies or whatever the contaminations were. My point being is that in the past, I have been informed of the Lake Placid Conference Center being a major contributor, and that was discovered via some satellite pictures, imagery of the lake showing contaminants coming from the Lake Placid Conference Center into the lake. The Lake Placid Conference Center, to my knowledge, was built in 1927. How many updates have been done to their sewer system, their septic system, to alleviate these such problems? Do we know that?
Yes, sir. So I will try to answer it, and if I can't, then Mr. McCarthy or Mr. Harris will chime in.
Okay.
We have, for several years now, perhaps more than several years, been working with the Camp and Conference Center because they're under consent order with DEP to improve their water quality. They are in the process of, they're going to go to central wastewater. We've worked collectively with them and the state of Florida to obtain funding, some of the public monies and some of their private monies. And we have bids, and we are all but like weeks away from turning dirt that will install new lift stations, new collection lines. And I would hope, now I may be wrong, but we would hope that within the next year that they will be off a septic tank system on sewer. Is that accurate, Kevin? Mr. Harris, is that close?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Now, another question for you, is that in the day when the sewer system was implemented in downtown Lake Placid, Hartzell's Market, which is probably one of the, if not the oldest, family-owned, singly-owned business in not only the community, but possibly even the county. I don't know that. But when it, when the sewer system was implemented, we received a registered letter from the Health Department stating that we were in neglect of having a onsite sewer system without the proper licensing. And if we didn't go with the plan of hooking to the sewer system, they would lock our doors. Why is that not being done to Lake Placid Conference?
I can't speak to that, and I know that that extension of the sewer system predates me. I don't know if, Mr. Wilson, if you run the council and how that happened, one of your first times or not, but I think you're talking about 20-plus years ago, correct?
Yeah. Well, when we were implemented, I, the timeframe, I don't know. I don't know. I'm sorry.
The answer, I mean, I think the answer, and I'll let, Mr. Harris is obviously the legal person here, but I think the consent agreement or consent order that the department has is sort of going to affect the same thing. Would you like to comment on that, Mr. Harris, or not?
The consent order required them to hook up or shut down, basically, or address their sewage treatment. They chose to go forward in partnership with us, getting grants, to basically collect their sewage and ship it into our plant. And that's what the DEP is funding primarily now. I'm not sure that was your question?
Okay.
But they were facing shutdown or, or treat your sewage.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what we were faced with. They was either going to close the store, or they were going to force us to lock our doors or connect to the sewer system. Now, I don't understand why the Lake Placid Conference Center wasn't given the same rules.
Conference Center, I know, has been under, trying to think of the right word, has been pressed by DEP for a decade, probably closer to 15 years.
Mm-hmm.
And that, of course, is a DEP thing with them. I really can't answer that better than that, Fred. But I agree with you. It is a significant source. Personally, as their neighbor, I'm glad to see it being addressed. And that project will allow us to expand the system around Lake Placid.
Okay. So another point that I would like to make, they're not to interrupt, I'm sorry. Why would, if we found a main nucleus for what I'm going to say is probably one of the biggest contributors to this issue, via some of, through the graphs that she showed in regards to where the studies were done and where the issues were gone. And I'm sorry, I don't have the proper, right name to carry on more than three minutes. I get that.
No, but we'll give you, we'll extend the time a little bit.
Okay. So we, in those, in a lot of the pictures that I have as presented, it shows numerous things along, this is one, numerous things along the road that parallels Catfish Creek with containers of, I don't know what. Okay. I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not, that fertilizers and treatments and everything for the adjacent grove that's right on Catfish Creek. So I'm going to say that they are major contributors to this whole issue. So that being said, why would we not confront and fix the very apparent issues before going into extremes of, and I use this word loosely, forcing the local residents to hook up to a sewer system? And is that going to be a money-back guarantee that that's going to fix the problem?
I'll take a stab at answering that. I think we all understand that there are a multitude of factors that have impacts, negative, potential negative impacts on water quality. We understand there's a wide range of factors. And we understand that each, in each of those areas, there needs to be improvements, just like there are BMP improvements that speak to the application of agricultural products and fertilizers. There's road design, collection things. And so with this is, there is no, we have no unrealistic expectation that septic to sewer conversion alone is going to do it. It's going to be a wide range of things. But obviously, the governor and the state legislature have prioritized the conversion of septic to sewer and are funding it, and have asked entities such as ourselves to ascend, to cooperate in that conversion plan.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to say that I'm against having a sewer system. It's, what I'm, what I'm trying to imply is, why not address clearly apparent situations that could be a major contributor to the issue that we have?
That should be happening concurrently.
Yes.
So, thank you, Mr. Hartzell. Okay. I have the next set of folks. Jack and Josephine Conley. You can each have three minutes, if you'd like. I assume you're together since you're at the same address.
My name is Jack Conley. I live at 607 Sunset Point Drive. I just wanted to comment on two things. The last meeting that we had, when you had your so-called experts here to educate us, we were told that we would have time to question them after they gave their presentations. And we didn't. You shuffled them away from the microphone right away. Is there any chance of us getting to question them again sometime in the future at one of these other meetings that are going to be scheduled?
I don't know that I can answer that, and I don't know that we, I'll leave that up to perhaps Kevin or Bill, but I don't know that we said we were going to let you question.
Oh, you definitely, you definitely did in that meeting.
Well, I don't know who said we were going to let you question our consulting engineers.
Indeed.
Okay.
Yeah. And we anticipate that when we get to that point, because we were talking about actually bringing the engineer for design specifically to Lake June Point at some point.
Right.
We're not there yet, but we're still trying to get through. I mean, it's been a busy month for me, and I apologize for that, but it's been a very busy month. But that's the intent was, and is at some point, when we get through, you would question about the design on that specific project with that engineer. So we have Placid Lake Homeowners Association, which is a different engineering design group than Lake June Point. So getting involved in that with back and forth between the two, Johnson Engineering, Star Engineering firm, Pinone's the fourth. So we would, at that meeting, we said we would try and host individual meetings with the individual homeowners associations, so that you could be targeted specifically to Lake June Point or Placid Lakes or Lake Placid. So those haven't been scheduled yet. Like I said, it's been a busy month. We've been doing a lot. We're not sitting on our tushes and not doing anything.
I understand that, but we were telling you we could do it at that meeting. I mean, to question them two months from now, doesn't do the same again because the design will be basically done by then.
The design is on hold for those areas as of today, so it won't be done. It's on hold.
Good. Good. Another, just one other thing that we have. The pictures and the information that the gentleman from Post and Engineering gave, the man who showed some pictures of what a lift station maybe looks like, it's nothing like what he showed there. What he was showing was basically scare tactics. Also, the information that he gave for the low-pressure sewer system, where he said they could run the line for 1,000 feet, and you have to have a hole running in it, a hole at the other end. That's incorrect, too. There has to be a hole for every water that is going to each house or, or the main, and there has to be another hole at approximately property line for each house when a shadow fire will be ignited. Isn't that correct?
No, that's absolutely correct. He was, what he said was, you could run the main the entire length or close to the entire length. Redirection of doors has to be made because you have to tie into that main
Right.
down the, down the street. And I think he was making the comparison of, instead of digging up the entire road, there would be a hole in the right of way, and they would run the main there would be a hole in the right of way, and they would run the main down. So that was comparison, was the road picture to where they would do directional bore for the main, not the laterals, which will still be a directional bore as opposed to a road cut. And that's the difference. One is directional bore, one's a full road cut.
Right, but there's still will be, in Lake June Point alone, assuming that there are about 183 homes or vacant lots combined, right, it would be growing to about 366 homes to be dug, even with a low-pressure system. So what I'm just saying is that, you know, people, people may think that the low-pressure system is not going to disturb the, your property, it's not going to disturb properties, it just won't be disturbing the, the painted street. That's all we have.
Thank you. And let me say, I understand the picture that was shown today is an example of a lift station with electrical service. I think the picture that Poston utilized also is very typical of what a lift station with a generator capacity, which would be, what I would think would be the design that was incorporated, that each lift station nowadays would include a generator. So I think, I would not characterize that as a scare tactic. I would just say, in there, in, I don't want to use the word defense as a way of an explanation, they were representing what would be utilized.
Okay, do your lift stations now have generators, permanent, still with generators?
The new ones are all being designed with permanent generators. We have five with permanent generators on today.
And how many lift stations approximately have altogether?
Twenty.
Twenty.
And we've only gotten five, we've only gotten permanent generators on five of them so far.
All the thought to money. Okay, thank you very much.
I think the point would be irresponsible nowadays to construct a lift station without a permanent generator.
And we're applying for grants currently to re-figure the others with generators.
Okay, so, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Conley, would Josephine speak?
Hello, my name is Josephine Conley, I live at 607 Sunset Point Drive. And just a few questions here, because of the research I've been doing on this low-pressure system, and it's quite scary. You're not only dealing with, we talked about the electricity part, okay, let's put that aside. I pulled up the low-pressure system on the, what can happen mechanically, okay? And there's a lot of things that happen mechanically, even if you have electricity, okay? The grinder pump, remember, is a lift station. So now, if you put these in each resident, you're going to have maybe, I think you want to do 1,000 to 2,000 grinder pump lift stations, now, on people's property, because that is one whole component. Now you're dealing with, anytime you have a grinder pump, you have blades. A blade is like your knife in your kitchen, has to be sharpened. So it tells you here, blades can become dull. And if you hear a strange noise from your grinder pump, this could be a sign that bearings are worn out and need replaced. If you smell, if you see water leaking, the grinder pump could be having a seal or gasket problem. If your grinder pump's not working, could be a sign of a problem with the motor or the parts of the system. Grinder pump, if it smells bad, could be again, seals or gaskets. Read manual, and then here, another. So this is quite scary, because just trying to call the Health Department, trying to call anybody, sometimes it takes four or five times to make a call. I tried this morning, the Health Department, couldn't get through, okay? So my question is, this is where these low-pressure systems, I don't see how you could have a happy community, because you not only have to worry about electricity when they go green in this country, you have to worry about, gee, my motor doesn't work, my gears don't work, my blades aren't sharpened. And they also did say here, here's another example, you cannot put anything down that drain except water, poo, and paper, the three Ps, which is toilet paper. If you get a glob of hair, now look at some of these residents, they have about 10, 20 people visiting them. They're all taking showers at their home. Where do you get a shower? You wash your hair. So these pumps will get clogged with enormous hair. You cannot put string, not that you'd want to throw string in there, okay? It tells you, don't use Drano, do not use Drano, you got to use something like, very delicate. So, I mean, it's a whole new way of training people, and who do you call? Because you already said, back when the 2022 special meeting, that you want us to be responsible when that light goes off. How could we be responsible? Who would you call? It says it right here on 42922, page seven of 127, you have here, current estimates are, we already, $10,000, $3,000 for septic. Here it goes, there are concerns about operating this, oh, here, just let me find it here. It's saying here, upon failure of property owners existing septic systems. I didn't have this all prepared. You're telling us that you're requiring us, okay, here it is, staff recommends that ownership of the system on private property be responsibility of the property owner.
So Miss, Miss Conley, let me, especially since your time is up, let me try to answer, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. McCarthy.
Sure, absolutely.
Again, in the area, in the wider area of things that have not been decided, that has not been decided. So we do not know yet, we have not made a decision as to whether or not where grinder pump, pumps are utilized. And I want everyone to understand, there will be areas where grinder pumps are utilized just because of engineering is going to dictate that. Where they are utilized, we have yet to make a decision. It may very well be that that bestays the property of the utility, and the utility will be responsible for maintaining them, replacing them, fixing them. We don't know that yet. Now I'll let Mr. McCarthy speak a little bit further in just a second to the reliability of these particular systems, but I, but I think everyone needs to understand that these are pretty widely-used systems. Sonne Lake of Seabrook, their new whole development is all on grinder pumps. A lot of coastal communities are on grinder pumps. Those, that technology, like everything else, has evolved over time, and so I'll let Mr. McCarthy speak to the basics of that technology.
Yeah, and as he mentioned Sonne Lake, so Sonne Lake has approximately 30% of their system on grinders, so 1,500, 1,500 grinder pumps. They're not the same E1s that we're using, they're a much cheaper version, just so you know. These grinder pumps, just like the pumps that are in your lift stations that we maintain, yes, you're supposed to put human waste, hair is part of that human waste, you don't throw diapers down, you don't throw string down, you throw, it's human waste that goes in a toilet. So it is a grinder, and by definition acts kind of like your disposal. So it chews up most things, and their life design is 15 to 20 years, so they're designed for it. That's not a, that's not a huge issue. Anything mechanical can break down, and that's why you use averages of life cycle cost on these, on the grinder pumps. So Port St. Lucie's been mentioned, Charlotte County, 30,000 in Port St. Lucie, I think 10,000 in Charlotte County. Martin County's going to have 10,000 of these when they're done. And again, depending on the areas and where the design is, that's, there will be grinder pumps, and there'll be grinder pumps in everybody's future at some point in time moving forward. So maybe not your house, but at somebody's house in your community. There are already, like I said, we have 1,500 just a little bit north of us. We only have about 50 here in Lake Placid so far, but.
Thank you. Ms. Eberhart, you're next. I'm sorry, Joe, you say you yield your time? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Carolyn Morrison.
Good evening, my name is Carolyn Morrison, I'm from 119 Sunset Point Boulevard. I don't want to be redundant, I know a lot of people have spoken very passionately about this topics for the last few meetings. Like Mr. Conley mentioned, you did mention at the last meeting, sir, just before Pernodis engineer spoke, and Jeff and Roger, I think their names were, they gave, you know, an interesting presentation on the wastewater treatment facility, which most people have started talking really about the user level, and everybody's passionate about the user level, but I think we also need to consider the strategic level of the wastewater treatment plant. And I was happy to hear that Mr. Royce mentioned there will be a workshop. I actually think a workshop is good, because it insinuates collaboration and bringing people together, and maybe having some type of process action teams where we can really collaborate and look at all different options, as opposed to, I think the community has felt over the last several months, that it's been a one-way street, and I know that's why people are getting very passionate about it. But anyway, I just want to bring a different topic up, and some of the questions may be rhetorical in some nature, but when Jeff and Roger talked about the waste treatment, wastewater treatment plant, they said it's going to be in the same location as the current one, and then they talked about the, the south-end waste treatment plant being in really bad shape, so they're going to pump everything up to this now higher-ground area where we currently have the one off of, I guess, Heartland and 17. I'm concerned about, you know, everybody's, the impact of that system itself, because it will be four times the size of the current one, even though it doesn't seem like there's going to be any additional displacement, it's going to be within the same system, but.
I'm going to tell you what I'm doing, Ms. Morrison, just so we don't get confused, I'll let Mr. McCarthy handle your questions while I'm running, and he can probably explain to you why this new advanced treatment system, even utilizing the same pond area, will be able to function at that site.
Well, actually, if you could just let me, because I actually haven't even gotten to my concerns. My concerns is the environmental and health impact. Somebody else, I think Mr. Hartzell mentioned about the health letter he received. I'm concerned really about the guarantee of the infiltration in and around the system, because it is fairly close to Lake June Point, and the residents that live in that area, have we considered, you know, or have there been any studies regarding the environmental impact? I mean, I personally have a son who's compromised, and I know I live in the middle of orange groves, and I know two and three times a year I'm going to have that horrific smell. But we're talking about a carousel open system, and I'm thinking of different times during hurricane season, during the winds that we get, during the storms that we get, all of the environmental impact that that has on, on the community itself, you know, the community.
And I'd really like for him to go ahead and explain, because I think it's important to understand that this new plant will be even more environmentally friendly than the current one we have. So, Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, just, and in comparison to septic tanks, which are on your property today, I mean, this is a 95-plus percent removal phosphorus and nitrogen, fecal chloroform, fecal matter. The removal rates on this are almost twice what our current plant is. So yes, it's four times, well, total capacity, four times the size at capacity when we get there, which will be a long ways down the road. There is a lot more, but even at that, you're going to have less of an impact. And we are applying as part of the resolution for extended reuse lines, so most of that water will be going to additional reuse, which is off-site down the highways watering the median. So there's going to be less impact to, when we run this new plant on Lake June and the area around Lake June there is today on our existing plant.
And what I, what I failed to mention was that while our current capacity plant is designed to 250, the pond area was designed to a million gallons. We just had never built the three additional trains, and so the reason we're able to utilize that same area is, the initial plant that was constructed several decades ago, it was designed with the ponds to meet a million gallons a day.
Right, I'm just wondering if you've considered putting it in a more rural area? Because 30 years ago, when it was first put in, I doubt there were any houses on Heartland, I doubt there were certain, you know, developed areas, and, you know, again, I know it's a small town, and we like to stay, you know, a small town, but there's still developed areas in and around that facility that will go from 250,000 to a million gallons. So that's just something I just was wondering if there were any studies or any consideration for it being moved to a more rural location, for the environmental concerns and possible health impact on the community in general? That's all I have.
I mean, I, I'll take a stab at answering it, and certainly I don't mean to preclude any other council members. The quick answer to your question, frankly, is no, because this has been engineered to work on the, and that was a site for a lot of geological reasons that was selected historically, and that's the best, one of the better locations to have this site.
Okay, and I also know that Fort Pierce, you had mentioned Fort Pierce, and the grinder system's working, again, at the user level, that's great, but Fort Pierce community has also moved to completely move their wastewater treatment facility away from the Indian River because of the environmental concerns. So just something to consider, that's all I wanted to go on the record for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I have a sheet from a request from Mr. Brad Arnold.
Brad Arnold. Yeah, my name is Brad Arnold, I live at 116 Bogan Villa Street Northeast. And for the last 15 years, I've seen this Lake June decline in water quality, fishing, and everything else. Especially the last four years, when the carp were introduced and ate every blade of grass off there. And even today, I'm sitting in my office at my home, and they're spraying the canals. I hope that we're, and the one lady mentioned it, the vegetation. I was at the last meeting, and the first speaker spoke of one solution to solve our problem is to find a flooding area, like they did down in the Everglades. I was involved with Save the Everglades. And the phosphorus levels, you know, to grow the grass, you all know more about it than I do, but if we kill every blade of grass out there, we're just polluting the lake more. I hope maybe some replanning or cut the spraying is going to happen. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that is all, that's all the speaker requests I have. What we're going to do is, we are going to move on to other business, some public hearings we're going to have go very quickly, so if you want to hang around to listen to us discuss the resolution that impacts this, certainly encourage you. In an effort to try to be as transparent as possible, if you are dying to speak and you have not filled out a form, if you want to fill out a form while we go through the rest of our business, and turn it into the clerk, near the end of the meeting, we'll give those that have already not spoken, if they want to, a chance. But we're going to move forward to, and open our public hearings. I'm sorry, is it, was anyone, before we go to public hearings, is there anyone else in the council that wants to comment on any of the comments or questions from the public? Just don't want to leave. Okay, let's move to public hearings. I guess, public hearing, first one is the second reading ordinance, 2023-07 garbage fee increase for commercial.
My battery's dead.
Let me go ahead and, it should be, what do I need to do, Mr. Harris, read it by title?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance of the town of Lake Placid, increasing the commercial garbage collection fees by minimum sections 80-41, comma, 80-49, and chapter 80 of the town code, semicolon, and providing an effective date.
I move to approve ordinance number 2023-07.
I think your mission is to approve and adopt, correct? Okay, in a second, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion from the council? Would anyone from the public like to comment? Seeing none, Eva, will you poll the council, please?
Councilmember Sat?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're now going to public hearing 4B, first reading ordinance 2023, adoption of millage. Just so everyone knows, the consideration be the proposed millage is 3.10, a reduction from the previous year's millage of 3.15. The ordinance by title is ordinance number 2023-07. The ordinance by title is ordinance number 2023-08, in ordinance of the Town Council, Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma, for fiscal year 2023-2024, comma, providing for an effective date. For the fiscal year 2023-24, comma, the operating millage rate for the town is 3.1 mills, comma, which is more than the rollback rate of 2.6425 mills by 17.31%.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-08.
Thank you, have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any further discussion by the council? Anyone from the public like to comment on the motion? Hearing none, Eva?
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
And just so the public knows, there'll be, the final adoption of the millage will be next Monday at 5:30 here, so...
Next council meeting?
Next council meeting, next Monday, the 18th, yes. Okay, we're moving on to 4C. First reading of ordinance 2023-9, budget 2023-2024, by the title, ordinance 2023-9, in ordinance of the Town Council, the Town of Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024, semicolon, allowing for line item adjustments during the year as needed, comma, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-9.
Second.
Any further discussion amongst the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, Eva?
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, our final ordinance, it's ordinance 2023-10, on first reading, ordinance number 2023-10, in ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, repealing sections, comma, limiting sections, comma, creating sections, and restating the town's regional utility code, and creating a unified utility rate for water distribution and wastewater collection and treatment, semicolon, providing for severance, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve 2023-10 ordinance on first reading.
Thank you, Miss... We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any further discussion by the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, Eva?
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings. We will go to the number five, Town Attorney, Planning Department, heads, mayor. We have nothing under the mayor. I thought I saw Ms. Rydel come in. Is she still here? I don't think she has anything tonight. Okay, so we will go to the Town Attorney, Mr. Harris.
You have before your resolution that is needed for the application of the next series of grants to fund the expansion of the septic to sewer. The resiliency, first one is a resiliency grant, which allows the town to apply for generators on some of the existing lift stations. The next is expansion of the reuse system, the distribution of the water after it's treated up and down U.S. Highway 27, which was mentioned earlier to your question, ma'am. Next is the Water Quality Improvement Grant, which is to pay 100% of the homeowner's cost of connecting to the town's wastewater collection and advanced treatment system. The current grant being used to pay for the million gallon per day advanced treatment plant as well as the lines, and this grant would pay the cost of connection. And the next is also a grant to pay the connection cost. The use of these funds requires to commit to require hookups, but that is only if you're using it to pay for hookups. It's kind of a circular argument. This does not compel us to use the prior grants that extend the lines to require hookups. This one basically funds the hookups. Any questions?
Any questions? Let me go ahead and read the resolution by title, Lake Placid Town Council Resolution 2023-12, a resolution, the Lake Placid Town Council authorizing applications for grants to pay the costs of connecting existing septic systems to the town's advanced wastewater collection and treatment facilities, comma, for resiliency grants, comma, and for grants to expand the town's water reuse system, semicolon, and establishing wastewater collection and treatment policies for the Lake Placid Regional Utility System.
I move to approve Resolution number 2023-12.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Ms. Hayes. Any further discussion amongst council? Anyone from the public? Just please state your name for the record.
Cullen Charles. Just a couple comments, because I know how it's important to get the accuracy right in a grant since it's going to the state or the federal. So, if we go to E, go to E, unless this has changed since it was published out there. So, Lake June and Winter, the watershed study Phase 2, which is what I spoke to earlier, shows the septic tanks are the largest contributor of total nitrogen and total phosphorus. I think the word phosphorus needs to be removed, as I showed in the table, because phosphorus is fertilizer, whereas nitrogen was related to septic tanks. Would be the first comment I'd like to make. And then on F, where F says, "The Florida Department of Health has from time to time, over the past several years, closed two different beaches on Lake June and Winter because of contamination from septic systems." My question is, I know it's from contamination, but I don't know that the findings actually zeroed in and proved that it was septic systems.
It was fecal.
My thought would be...
It was fecal. It was fecal chloroform.
But fecal cannot, not necessarily is septic. I get it, but fecal could be from...
We can simply remove those two off.
I'm just saying that I'm...
We'll just take those two off.
Okay, those are just two comments. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, are you concerned if we removed any of the language that it would affect the resolution or the application for grants?
Take out total phosphorus in E. The other, I believe, is correct, F, as written.
Okay, I mean, we've heard comments, members of council, I'll entertain a motion. If there's a motion, please note what modifications, if any, you would like to hear F.
Yes, I'll approve modifications of E and F. Second.
Just to be clear, I think, Greg, are you suggesting we're gonna remove the words total phosphorus from E?
Remove the words phosphorus, yes, from E.
And are you, did you wanna make an amendment to F, or do you wanna leave it as it is at the recommendation of the league and council?
You can just take F off.
I think we need F in there because I think it gives the, it gives us more power to get the grant.
That is the purpose of the resolution.
Right, right.
We can leave that in, then. I was only impressed that they're gonna be wanting to help with this, either way.
I'm okay with taking phosphorus out, but...
That's fine, we'll just take phosphorus out and leave the F in, and I'm, that's...
That's your motion?
That's my motion, yes.
Are you willing to accept it as made motion, Ms. Hayes?
Taking phosphorus out and leave F alone, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst the council? Anything from the public? Yes, sir, come up, give your name for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Gary Charles, 522 Sunset Point. Just per Charlie saying fecal count, which all of us know is us, it ain't us. It's human waste from Miami, chickens, manure, everything that's being blown on our grubs, which are totally connected to our lakes. Let's get it right. Let's not make the human the responsibility. Let's get the responsibility of the millions of tons of manure, oh, excuse me, fertilizer that is being spread all around us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on the motion itself? Yes, sir, come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Brad Schuman. I live at 161 Loquat Road Northeast. I'm in one of those areas where it's gonna be low pressure, I'm pretty sure, and I'm not afraid of that. I've worked with pressure conveyances for 50 years. I have a question. You said that Placid Lakes and Lake June Point have been on hold. I'd like to hear a little more about that. And the cost numbers that you first put out, it looks like the 40 million is gonna be almost limited to Lake Placid alone and not the allied areas, although we need them in the, in my opinion, we need the outside areas as well. The grant, I don't know how much you're applying for, but I wanna confirm that that grant extends to those areas like Placid Lakes North and beyond.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. McCarthy to answer your first question later. Your second question is germane to this actual motion, so I think Mr. Harris will assure you that these grant, this grant, if granted and we ultimately accept it, will be able to be utilized across any projects we take part in. Is that right, Mr. Harris?
That is correct.
And do you have a timeframe that you're working with?
Yes, the reason it's on the agenda is the grant is due, the application is due this week, so I just needed the town's authority. It's already filled out and ready to go.
Okay.
They generally respond in four to five months, so hopefully that will be in time for the town to make its decisions of where to spend the money.
And does that grant follow the BMAP process where they, the town doesn't have to put up a 50% or 20% or what it's for?
Now, you're getting out into a question that I'm not sure of. I know we have to advise and, I believe this becomes part of the BMAP process and projects, but I'm not an expert in BMAP itself.
Okay, just maybe sometime down the road, you can answer that?
I can talk about BMAP enough to use it to help us qualify for grants.
Yeah.
I think to answer your question is no, there's no match to these grants.
There's no utility dollar match.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. There's no dollar match.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about. Generally, when you get a grant, the city has to put up 50 or about 20%.
These have been 100% grants. I'm applying for another 100% grant.
Okay.
So, it would be free to hook up. I assume nobody would object to that.
And what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna, if there's no other questions or comments, we're gonna vote on the motion, and I'll let Mr. McCarthy answer the first part of your question. Is there any other questions specific to the vote on the resolution? Seeing none, Eva?
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. McCarthy, do you, I'm sorry, I've already forgot what the first part of this question was, but I'll let you speak to it.
Yes, just real quickly, so we have put a hold for a couple of months, that's not a long time hold, on the design of gravity versus low pressure, so we don't keep spending money on if the council decides to go to a gravity system for parts of it versus low pressure. So, it's a temporary hold. Most of those plans are at about 70% now, just so you know, and we will have a workshop and a decision made in the next, either the October meeting, November meeting, on which we're gonna move so we can keep moving forward. However, quick load, 40 million dollar grant everybody talks about, for gravity systems, it's about 15 million, because the plant's gonna take 20 of it, which you saw in the previous presentation. We have to close two other plants. We have contingency in those designs, so it's about a $15 million that we're talking about to do extensions out into the areas, whether it be Lake June Point, Placid Lakes, Lake Placid. Those designs are all underway, so the systems will be designed. Once we get bids, then we'll know what we can afford to build.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. We're gonna move on to 5C2, ratification of the second bulk service agreement with Lake Placid Camping Conference Center. Mr. Harris?
You've seen the bulk service agreement. It is the agreement whereby the Camping Conference Center, the district church, agrees to fund on a monthly basis the cost of the bond for extending the sewer line to the, sewer line and lift stations to the conference center. Initially, it was going to be a million eight 79 600. It now is going to be 413,512 dollars. Because of that reduction, DEP has allowed the reduction of the bond itself, so the bulk service agreement can be reduced. We had asked the mayor, because we're trying to move this thing along quickly, to sign that at the lower amount. He agreed, so this would be to ratify the mayor's signature on the bulk service agreement that funds payment of the bond.
Any questions, Mr. Harris?
I think we're good. I move that the Lake Placid Town Council ratify and affirm the second amended bulk service agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wilson, any further discussion amongst council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Eva?
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. There's anything else from you right now, Mr. Harris?
No, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, we're gonna go back to you on D1, Resolution 2023 Banking Signatures, Heartland National Bank.
And this is simply just to get me on the signature card at the bank and get the previous town administration off of it.
What action do you need?
We just need a...
I move to approve Resolution 2023-11 for banking signatures on Heartland National Bank.
I have a second.
Second. Any further discussion up here? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, Eva?
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. 5D2, Penoni Supplemental Agreement to Master Agreement, FDPE Grant Project Management Assistance. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, this simply shifts the grant administration from Joe Melber, whose salary is being paid to that, to Penoni and Associates, so they will administer the grant through the bidding process. This is, so, this is simply, that authorizes us to pay them, which will come out of the grant funds. We have to do an amendment to the grant, but we need this, we need this agreement approved first so we can submit it to the, to DEP.
Any questions? Motion?
I make the motion to move and approve the supplemental agreement with Penoni Engineering and authorize the mayor to sign it. Second.
Second. Any further discussion amongst the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
That is it for the action item, I believe. Like I said earlier, is there, if anyone, if anyone did not previously speak and would like to fill out a form, in just a minute, I'll give you the opportunity to come up. I wanna make sure we give everyone a chance. If you do want to, see Eva, is there, Mr. McCarthy, is there anything else from the staff that we need to address tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're all good. I'm gonna go to councilman. Rachel, Eva, our Town Council meeting for final adoption of the budget and millage is next Monday night, 5:30 right here, so the public knows, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, anything from you?
No, sir.
Mr. Sapp?
I have nothing.
Ms. Hayes?
I'd like to have an update on the police station.
Okay, Carl Cool and the chief and I are gonna meet on Monday, next Monday morning at 9:00 a.m. He's gonna bring the flow plan so the chief can go over them, we can look at them. Location selected out front, so at that, we'll be moving forward on design. He's pulled the initial plans that were prepared by draftsmen, so they'll work on the architectural drawings and the Southwest Florida Water Management District permit, the drainage permit, to see what modifications we have to make. We're not sure we have to make any, but he's gotta pull the permit and review so we... the permit and review, so we know what we need to do for, uh, for the front. So it's moving along.
Good, is the area staked out, out there where the PD is gonna be built?
That is, that is the actual size of it, it will probably shift a little bit, but it's the actual size of the building that's proposed today.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Well, let me say from my part, I, first of all, I wanna thank the citizens who came, I, I appreciate the investment of your time and, and coming here and, and sharing your input. We will keep the stakeholders very involved in the, as we move forward and through the decision-making process. I also wanna remind, I actually saw, followed our, our new garbage truck around the other day and watched it operate, and I'll remind everyone that lives in the town that we now have an automated garbage truck and it can only pick up the can, it, so please make sure everything's in the can, we will not, they will not stop and pick up other items, other items that are on or around the can, will be left, they may eventually be picked up later, but we, with this new automated truck, we can't go. So, Mr. Harris, anything else from you, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you have a question? Again, Ms. Barker, identify yourself.
Ms. Barker, just one final comment, with, all the people that I've been talking with, we really do appreciate the hard work that the town council is doing, the utility department, we know you have a monumental job in front of you. At the same time, many of us are accustomed to working where we take in the whole picture, which goes back to the briefing we did earlier, to look at all the things that can be done to improve, our concern is to improve the quality of the lake, so we appreciate everything that you're doing, and we'll work closely with you, not only in workshops, but also in other special town council meetings, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Conley, come on up front. I will say we are working, we've made a few improvements, we're trying to get the sound in here a little bit better, we'll continue to try to make it better and better, yes, ma'am. If you have a record, your name?
I'm Josephine Conley at 607 Sunset Point Drive. You touched on the, uh, new police station. Is that going to be in the city, or is that gonna be annexed?
It'll be right here.
It's gonna be right here in our city, like, right on this property, ma'am. Well...
Right on the front door.
Um, that, that's a concern, I mean, I, I, I'm only saying because when you did it originally, and they were coming here, and then it was vacant for a while, the town just didn't have the protection, as far as I was concerned. I know what a city gets like, once you move the precinct out of the city, it's a big problem, okay? Causes for massive problems. Not only that, if they're gonna be stationed here, are you gonna do something different to the highway? Because what happens is, people know how far the police are, there's no reason for them to be hanging around town. So, that's a big concern. I don't know if you've thought about that, because we have a quaint, lovely, nice, people like coming to, you have all the murals, they feel protected. I didn't feel protected when you pulled out the last time. And then there was a lot of conversation and a lot of problems that you came back to the city. So, I know you want a bigger space, but think about it, you know, because the whole thing is, we focus around our city because, you know, crime is the biggest issue, so...
Let me, let me say that, the first of all, of course, the building is going to be here, it is within the town, this is within the town. To my knowledge, we've never, ever pulled the town police department out of the town, it's been located in the same place for several decades now, and we, and we had a recommendation from our police chief that this would be the best location, and I'll remind you that our officers 24/7 are patrolling, and so it is, not like the police are gonna be sitting at the station, and...
I understand.
They should very rarely be in the station, they're gonna be out patrolling. Did I say anything inaccurate, chief?
No, that's absolutely correct, the officers are continually on patrol and encouraged to stay in their vehicles in the center of town. They write their reports in their vehicles now, and everything can be done directly from the car, they do not have to come back to the station.
Well, that's a comfort, because, you know, when you first moved here originally, and that was the plan to move them here, uh, it just took a while for the city to seem to get back to normal, even though you're saying you're the city, are you annexed, is that something different?
No, this area is within the town limits, obviously, we're within the town limits and here, so... And I, and I will tell you, just for, for the public knows, one of the reasons we're building a new police department building is because it would cost nearly as much to remodel and refit the existing building to the level it needs to be in order to be safe for the employees, to maintain proper storage of records and evidence, that it, it just, we're utilizing some money, some federal money we received in part to pay for it, so that we did not have to remodel an older building.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I didn't, no one turned anything in, Eva, correct?
No.
Okay. Anything else from, anyone up here? Well, thank you again for the investment, your turn, we stand adjourned.
I'm fixing to go talk to him about the fertilizer that pissed him out.
And the lake quality is worse, and they were doing more when fruit prices were there.
I have no idea what I'm gonna tell him about.